Good evening, everyone, and welcome to and welcome to Jurassic Parliament. Welcome again to Parliament. Good evening to read through the process.
Thank you so much, Mayor Catherine. I'm thrilled to be here. Even though it's at a distance, I have such fond memories of you being in your meeting room with those splendid paintings behind you. And I wonder if we could just start by having each council member give their name around the dais, since some of them have my have computers and some don't.
I'm Ethan Benson.
Great.
Hello, everyone. I'm Hunter Jackson with the Planning Commission.
And I'm Luke Mooney. I'm also in the Planning Commission.
Very good.
Councilmember Matt Wilson. Good to see you again, Ann.
Good to see you, Matt.
And Karen Ferguson, also counsel.
Very good.
And Joe Johnson, also counsel.
Okay. And I'd also like to see you, Mr. City Administrator, in a different venue than when I saw you last. Yes. Okay.
Couple other commissioners on that are on Zoom, like Mr. Goodman here, Jim Goodman.
Uh huh.
Well, it's on a on Zoom. It's not, not in the chamber. My Kevin? My channel is
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, and Jim Ferguson is our interim finance director.
Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you so much for coming. As we know, saying, let's spend a few hours with Robert's Rules of Order. It's really going to be fun. Is like saying, you're going to really enjoy your root canal procedure. So I'm very grateful to you all for for coming. I'm going to share my screen. And here we go. So I did send a PDF that had these slides, but you certainly do not need to have it in order to take the workshop, but it might be useful for note taking or for reference, depending on your preferences. So our topic today is great city council meetings. And is that all visible, Deb? Everybody can see it?
Yes, they can.
Great. So we're going to cover the following. We'll have a brief introduction, then we'll talk about meeting discussion, point of order and appeal, how to do this, motions and amendments, who's in charge? I'm going to say a few words about the Planning Commission, and then we'll cover public comment. And then we'll talk about the right kind of control. So if you if you feel have a question, please feel free to raise your Zoom hand. Although sometimes it happens that questions that come up are actually going to be covered later in the event. So that 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 might be the case. Why are we here? What's my goal tonight? I would like to invigorate you to run effective meetings to serve your community. I use the word invigorate because oftentimes we tend to fall into patterns and do things the way we always do. And sometimes a fresh look can be helpful. So that's what I'm hoping for tonight. After taking this training, you will be able to apply the authority of the chair and the group correctly to follow best practices for fair and inclusive discussion, to respond to disorder and difficult people, to make motions and amendments, and to run effective public comment sessions. I do want to say that this is strictly based on the principles and practices of parliamentary procedure. I'm not an attorney, and nothing in this presentation constitutes legal advice. If your attorney tells you something different, then listen to your attorney. So the method is this, we're going to be in the League of Northwest Dino Cities. It's not entirely realistic. It's a fantasy. But there's some overlap with real life. And you are going to be the members of the Dynopolis City Council. So here's a map of the League of Northwest Dino Cities. You can see Dynopolis down on the bay there. My late husband and I had a lot of fun creating 70 different cities for this league, each of which has its own particular project. So we're at the City of Dynopolis regular council meeting, and the motto of the city is we do our best for all our residents, whether we like them or not. So that's our city motto. And obviously, the first thing you do is you call the meeting to order. You take a gavel if you have one, and you wrap it lightly one time, and this meeting of the Dynopolis City Council is called to order. This is after you've sat in the chair that's reserved for the person running the meeting. So the word chair has two meanings. It means the physical station in which you sit, which comes from the days when only princes or bishops had chairs. Everybody else had to stand or sit on benches. And it also refers to you as the person running the meeting. So in some cases, the chair will be the mayor, the chair could be the chair of the Planning Commission, whatever. You ask the clerk to take the role, and you announce that a quorum is present or not. So it's the chair's duty to determine that there is a quorum. The quorum is the minimum number of voting members who must be present for business to be done. Usually, it's a majority, more than half of the members in office, the members who are actually serving on the council. So quorum is different from votes cast. Quorum is a passive condition that allows you to take action, and then the votes cast are the action that you take. And if you lose your quorum, you can't do business. So on your council, what is the quorum? Anybody want to shout it out?
Four.
Four, exactly. Four is a majority of seven. And you can't count a part of a person in all these parliamentary calculations. You have to round up to the whole number. Now, local government bodies must not create a walking quorum or a serial meeting. When members of the body talk or email with each other outside of meetings, such that a quorum is discussing the body's business, the Sunshine Act has been violated. You can talk to other people as long as the total number is less than a quorum. And this happened in my home city of Shoreline some years ago. Some of the council members were exchanging emails among each other such that more than a quorum was discussing the issue, and they ended up having to pay a personal fine for the offense. Your agenda is prepared by the leadership, but it's within the control of the council, subject to notice requirements, of course. And Robert's Rule says that if you follow the standard order of business, you don't need to vote to adopt an agenda. But many bodies do vote. It takes a majority vote to adopt and a two thirds vote to change an agenda later in the meeting. This is an example of a simplified standard order of business, approval of minutes, officers' remarks and reports, committee reports, unfinished business. We don't say old business anymore. And then new business, if your city includes this as a category, which some cities do not. So let's jump right into meeting discussion, point of order and appeal, and we're going to begin with an exercise. So I know that you people sitting at the dais have copies of the script that we're going to read. I'd like you, as we read this, to watch for rules for discussion, inappropriate remarks, point of order and appeal, and the chair being out of line. I'm going to be the chair, so I can assure you that she will be out of line. And so in real life, members must be recognized by the chair before speaking, but we're going to slide that over. And in this script, the numbers take the place of recognition. You'll just read the number that's there. No acting ability is required, although if you care to put a little body English in your remarks, that will certainly be beneficial. So we're going to talk about weed control in Dynopolis. I'm the chair, and I need volunteers for five roles as laid out here. So just speak up and say which one you're willing to be.
I'll be the gardener.
Okay, and who is that?
This is Luke. Luke Mooney.
Sorry?
Luke.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch your name.
Her name is Luke.
Luke, very good. Thank you. You're on the Planning Commission, right?
Yes.
Okay, you'll be the gardener. Sorry, the banker. And then who will be the botanist?
I'll be the gardener. Oh, botanist, okay. I guess Elizabeth there is a little bit different. Okay.
Wait a minute. Is it different? Let me let me pull up my script.
Chair, gardener, photographer.
Okay, sorry. Sorry about that. Hold on. Yes, banker, gardener, dancer, photographer, football fan. Sorry about that. We'll ignore what's on the screen. Okay, so Luke was going to be the gardener. And who was next?
Joe.
Jeff was going to be the?
Gardener.
Who's the gardener?
Oh, photographer then.
The witch?
Photographer. There's a witch. I'll be the witch.
Great.
You all have different lists, or what's going on?
No, I won't.
So I'll stop my stupid share. Sorry about that. Okay, so if you have the printed copy, we have the chair, the banker, the gardener, the dancer, the photographer, and the football fan. So so far, we have a gardener and a photographer.
I'll be the football fan.
Okay, Kara will be the football fan.
I'll be the dancer.
And who is that?
Ethan.
Ethan will be the dancer.
I'll be the banker, the Andre.
Okay, Andre will be the banker. Wonderful. I'm also going to call this up on my screen. And I do apologize for having the roles confused. I just wanted to give you something different, since I know some of you have taken this workshop before. All right, I'll share this screen here. And as I say, I'll be I'll be the chair. Okay, can everybody see it? Weed control at City Hall. Is it showing up? Okay, as council members know, when we built our new city hall building 10 years ago, it was landscaped according to green principles. We use only the latest energy efficient tools and methods. However, despite our best efforts, the blackberries and the English ivy have gotten out of hand. The staff recommends that we hire a herd of goats from rent-a-goat in order to trim the grounds. Does any member care to make that motion?
I move that the staff be directed to hire a herd of goats from rent-a-goat in order to trim the grounds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the staff be directed to hire a herd of goats from rent-a-goat in order to trim the grounds. Do you care to speak to your motion?
This is a very sensible, environmentally friendly way to take care of the overgrowth. I know that in Washington State, they use goats all the time to trim their county parks.
I think this is a silly way to tackle this problem. I'm in favor of slash and burn myself. I love the way industrial's trying to paint colors to destroy the blackberries and the ivy roots and branch.
Members are reminded that under Robert's Rules of Order, only one main motion can be considered at a time. We are discussing the proposal to hire a herd of goats, so no other main motion can be made.
I can't believe you said that. How could anybody be in favor of slash and burn? Have you no consideration for the well-being of our planet? You're just an out and out fossil.
Well, in my opinion, your crazy environmental ideas are just bad. We're going to be sorry to be ever going to smell like a victim.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
Under Robert's Rules of Order, no one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. These members are monopolizing the conversation and also are using insulting language to each other.
The point is well taken. We need to hear from everyone in turn, and all discussion must be respectful. Who else would like to speak?
Point of information, Chair.
State your question.
How much would this cost anyway?
Gardener, can you advise?
Yes, the staff estimates that the cost will be $12,000 per year.
Gosh, that is very spending. I love nature, but this will put us on the straight and narrow path to the poorhouse. If you weren't all the flaming liberals, you'd see the need for fiscal conservatism.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
The words blaming liberals are inflammatory.
Oh, yes, the point is well taken. Members will kindly refrain from inflammatory remarks. Is there further discussion?
I'm not so sure about this. I think we're being kind of hasty here. If you studied the Zodiac, you'd know that the sun is in the house of tars these days. Here's what my horoscope said this morning. You need to reach a decision organically. There's no way for you to rush it. Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
The last speaker's remarks do not appear to be germane to the issue we're discussing.
The point is well taken. Members are reminded that under Robert's Rules of Order, discussion must be relevant to the topic at hand.
Well, I think that we can't really address this unless we look at the governor's report on climate change. I was reading it the other day, and I was really impressed with the official recommendations.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
I believe that the governor's report on climate change is not germane to our discussion right now.
Well, the chair will ask the council to decide this question. All those who believe that the governor's report on climate change is germane to our discussion right now, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who believe it is not germane, please say no.
No.
The noes have it. The report is not germane, and we will not discuss it at this time.
I don't think we need to hire a goat from rent-a-goat to find you. A glance around our meeting room should be enough.
Point of order.
State your point.
That is an insulting remark to goats.
The point is well taken. Members will refrain from personal and insulting comments and keep their discussion on topic.
It seems to me that goats are kind of smelly and messy. I'm worried that this is going to downgrade our professional image.
It seems to the chair that you're worrying too much about appearances. Can't you get down from your high horse and consider what's best for the planet?
Whoa, point of order, Chair.
State your point.
The chair is out of line here. Under Robert's rules, the chair has to follow the same rules as the rest of us and may not make personal remarks.
Oh, the point, the point is well taken. The chair apologizes for getting carried away.
I think this is a great idea. I'm a Capricorn, and the sign of the goat is an excellent omen for our association.
In my opinion, anyone who supports the community idea of a bozo.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
The word bozo is an insult.
The chair will rule if the word bozo is not an insult and may be used.
Appeal. Second.
Very well, the ruling of the chair has been appealed and seconded, so the group will decide. As you know, appeals pertaining to language and decorum cannot be debated. It's just a straight up or down vote. All those who believe that the ruling of the chair that bozo is not an insult should be sustained, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who disagree, please say no.
No.
Very well, the noes have it, and the ruling of the chair is not sustained. Members may not use the word bozo. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Very well, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of the motion that the staff be directed to hire a herd of goats from rent-a-goat in order to trim the grounds, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no.
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 The ayes have it, the motion passes, and staff will move ahead.
Well, I still think we're going to regret being so extravagant about this.
The member is reminded that once a discussion has been, decision has been taken, no further discussion is allowed. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. So thank you. Thank you all. Doing a splendid job there. So let's What was that?
It was almost word for word the same as what we had the council meeting.
Well, I was thinking myself that such a thing would never happen in your meetings, but just in case, let's look at, let's look at a few ideas. So there is a principle in Robert's Rules that is very easy to say, but not so easy to manage. It's called the principle of equality. All members have equal rights, privileges, and obligations. It sounds perfectly obvious, but it doesn't always play out in practice. And so we have a key point here, that discussion in council and committee meetings is not a conversation. It's debate, and it has its own rules. And one of them is this fundamental guideline. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. It is so important. We're going to have it in red. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. This is just critical and transformative, but we don't follow it. Councils and commissions tend to discuss their affairs in conversational mode. And in conversations, dominant people tend to dominate, and agreeable people tend to let them. So you must have a structure to make sure that everyone has an equal chance to speak, and this is both fair and efficient. And this rule is also the best way to ensure that each person has an equal voice. It's a real paradox. You know, Robert's Rules gets bad knocks for being archaic and patriarchal and out of date. But in fact, when it's properly applied, it gives you an inclusive structure for everyone. It's a real paradox. And this system will make for robust discussion and advance your equity goals. So when it's not being followed and things deteriorate into a hockey match, if the chair fails to intervene, a member can make a point of order. So point of order, again, sounds archaic and old, but we're going to talk about it. And in our system, our Jurassic Parliament system is represented by a flying dinosaur. So we're discussing a motion, hire a herd of rent-a-goats. That's the main motion. We'll talk about it a little bit later. And somebody makes a point of order. It flies over the heads of the main motion, and the chair bats it out of the sky. The chair issues a ruling. So I'm going to play you an example of this, and I'm going to play it twice.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well taken. Members may not use this term.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well taken. Members may not use this term. So you see, it's very straightforward. The member says point of order. The chair replies, state your point. The member explains, and then the chair gives a ruling. The point is well taken, or the point is not well taken. Now, this is some really important stuff to know about point of order. You can make this motion except during voting. You do not have to be recognized. You can just shout it out. And you may actually interrupt a speaker if necessary, although we don't recommend doing this frequently. But it must be timely. You have to make the point of order at the time of the offense. You can't come back an hour later or the next day and say, wait a minute, you know, I think we made a mistake there, or that remark was not very pleasant. So you notice that the chair in this is using the third person to keep things neutral and less in conflict. Members will refrain from inflammatory remarks. It's like you're speaking on the voice of Robert. Don't say you're out of order, or you made a mistake, because that personalizes things and creates immediate conflict. Now, there is a pitfall here that I want to warn you against. Don't weaponize point of order. You may interrupt to make a point of order, and sometimes you have to, but usually it's not necessary to interrupt. And interrupting is emotionally disruptive and throws people off their stride. Some councils have done well by agreeing among themselves, not to interrupt each other with a point of order, but to wait till the council member has finished their remarks and then make the point of order. Now, obviously, if the council member is going on and on for 10 minutes, you might want to interrupt, but a lot of times it's not necessary. It's very important to use this motion correctly. You make a point of order if a rule has been broken. Sometimes people will seize on it and think that this is their chance to get their views across. Do not make a point of order because you think someone has made a factual mistake, or because you disagree with what they said. You have to speak about that when it's your turn to discuss. If someone is confused and a council member has trouble explaining what the point of order is about, the chair can ask, what rule has been broken? What rule has been broken? That's your magic bullet to find out what is going on. And when in doubt, ask the group. The chair can always ask the group to decide if a point of order is correct or not. That statement is just a bunch of baloney. Point of order. State your point. The word baloney is insulting. The chair is in doubt and will ask the group to decide. All those who believe the word baloney is insulting, please say aye. All those who believe it is not insulting, please say no. The ayes have it, the word baloney is insulting and may not be used, or the noes have it, the word baloney is not insulting and may be used. Remember the famous phrase, if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. So this is one way for the chair to get out of the kitchen. You don't have to take that heat. You can let the group decide. Once the chair has ruled on a point of order, the only allowable form of discussion is to appeal the ruling. No arguing about it. Appeal, in our view, is the most important motion in all of Robert's Rules and the least known. The chair enforces order and decorum, but the group is the final authority. And any two members can appeal a ruling of the chair. One member appeals and one seconds the appeal. The exception is if there is a ruling on a matter where there cannot be two reasonable interpretations, then the ruling cannot be appealed. So let's have an example of appeal.
The port was a cesspool of corruption.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well taken. Members may not use this term.
Appeal.
Second.
Very well, the ruling of the chair has been appealed and seconded. The members will decide the matter. The question is whether the chair's ruling that the words cesspool of corruption break our rules of decorum should be sustained. All those who believe it should be sustained, please say aye. All those who believe it should not be sustained, please say no. In this instance, the members voted no, so the ruling of the chair was not sustained. I've put this unhappy figure in just for fun, but in fact, if you lose an appeal, it's better to maintain a neutral face. Try to give the impression that you don't care. Or at least that you're not taking it personally. So the chair has to be very careful in explaining the vote to the members, because the basic principle is the chair's ruling stands until it's overturned. So you're asking people to vote on the question, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? And it takes a negative vote for the appeal to win. A majority vote in favor of sustaining the chair's ruling or a tie means that the chair's ruling stands, and the chair may vote on the appeal. So this is how you process it, and we saw that in our little script as well. Now, appeals pertaining to decorum or the order of business cannot be debated. I think that's a good thing. If we could argue about whether bozo is an insult or not, we'd be there all night. When an appeal can be debated, the process is different from anything else in Robert's Rules. And technically, these two motions are called incidental motions. That means they're processed immediately. No other business can take place until they are dealt with. And Robert's Rule says that points of order and appeals are included in the minutes as precedent for the future. But sometimes somebody makes a point of order, and it's just like a minor reminder that we've got to get back on track or whatever. And so Jurassic Parliament believes it's not necessary to include minor points of order in the minutes. These also do not count as your turn for speaking. They're separate from debating and discussing your issues. And CTEC has a very simple, nice way to do it. Any member shall have the right to challenge any action or ruling of the mayor, in which case the decision of the majority shall govern. So that's kind of keeping it very simple. So we believe that point of order and appeal are the heart of democracy. They are just essential because they're the way that the group is the final authority, and the chair has to serve as the servant of the group. So I'm going to pause here for a moment and just ask if anybody has any questions so far on what we've covered.
There will be any questions.
Okay, well, then we'll just continue on to our next portion, which is about how you're going to do this, how you're going to achieve all these wonderful goals that we're talking about. So we have six recommendations for you. Seek recognition before speaking. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. No interrupting in general. No sidebar conversations. Set time limits, and courtesy and respect are required. So let's take a look at these. Seeking recognition. You raise your hand, and you wait to speak until the presider calls your name, nods at you, or gives you some other sign that you have permission to speak. Online, you can use the raise hand function or raise your physical hand, and for Zoom on the telephone, you can press star nine. When you have not been recognized, you have a duty to remain silent. That comes as a big surprise to some people. The exception is a point of order when it's essential. So this is a wonderful paper that a colleague wrote. So this is a wonderful paper that a colleague wrote, rights and responsibilities of the member. And I will be sending you a day or two after our session, a packet of reference materials that includes this. And I really recommend studying it so you get some idea about what your rights and responsibilities are. Then we had our guideline, no one may speak a second time till everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. So that means no cross-talk between council members or commission members. People are not going to be talking directly to each other. So the chair can keep track of who has spoken and who wishes to speak using a chart. The chair can empower the vice chair to do this. It's good training for them. And here's a sample of a speaking chart. You have full permission to adapt this for your meetings. When I run our choir board meetings, I have it on a little clipboard and I just check everybody off as they speak. And that way, it's very easy to notice who has spoken and who has been silent. Another great method is the round robin, where the chair goes around the table, asking each person in turn for their opinion. And people may pass and speak at the end. Now, if you do that, you want to have a pencil in hand to jot down points or questions for when your turn arrives. And the chair must wait their turn also. Sometimes the chairs have a tendency to answer everybody back, which is not fair. And you can vary the order of speaking if you want to avoid what's called the order effect, where people who speak early or late have more influence. And this rule applies to questions and answers also into discussions with staff. Sometimes you see one council member and a staff person going back and forth for 15 or 20 minutes, and that's not a good idea. Don't let any two people hijack the meeting. Sometimes it works well to have one round of the round robin and then just call on anyone who wishes to speak a second time. Another new option I heard about is five minutes per speech for the first round and three minutes for the second round, if you decide to use this method. When a member has the floor, they have the right to speak until they've completed their comments. Members may not interrupt each other. And the chair may interrupt members when necessary to bring them to order. But Robert's rule says specifically, the chair may not interrupt a member just because they know more about the subject than the member does, which I think is quite wonderful. And then, of course, members may interrupt to make a point of order when it's essential. No sidebars or texting, no whispering, disable the chat, I'm sure you do that anyway. No texting to each other or people outside during meetings and no posting on social media during meetings. In the city of Burien, some years ago, they had a council member, she's no longer on the council, but she spent the entire meeting posting on her social media accounts, misleading and hateful comments about what her fellow council members were saying. And that is just poison. They had to set up a rule to stop that. We recommend that you keep your camera on when meeting on Zoom. Unless technical considerations prevent it, all council members should keep their camera on while participating online. Otherwise, you're lurking, you're observing your colleagues without yourself being observed. And this is disturbing and creates an unpleasant emotional imbalance. Now, structuring discussion in these ways can be frustrating. Council members sometimes say, oh, I wish we could just hash it out and have a free-form discussion. Well, the Open Meetings Act and the Press of Time mean that usually this won't serve your council well. But sometimes there is benefit in the conversational style or informal discussion. It can be useful at study sessions, committee of the whole, or in committee or commission meetings. The chair still must ensure that no one dominates. But I beg of you, please, don't make the conversational style your ordinary or default style of discussion. Now, it's the duty of the chair under Robert's rules to expedite business in every way compatible with the rights of members. So we recommend that councils set estimated times for agenda items. 15 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever. You always want to put all times approximate so that they're flexible, you're not hidebound by it. And we recommend time limits on individual council member speeches, three minutes or five minutes. The Robert rule is 10 minutes. You can tell that he wrote it in the 19th century, you know, that's too long for our modern day. Now, once you've set a time limit, if you want to suspend it or change it, you can by a two-thirds vote without debate. A city in Colorado that I worked with, one spent 15 minutes debating whether to extend the meeting by 30 minutes. And that made it very clear to me why Robert says you can't debate changing your time limits. Now, in large assemblies, each member may speak twice on each motion per day. In small boards, this limit does not apply. But some councils do adopt a two-time limit, which can be suspended again by a two-thirds vote without debate. That's up to you. So we have our paper, Time Limits Create Productive Meetings, that I'll include in your reference materials. And another paper we wrote, Are Your Meetings Seven Hours Long?, which I certainly hope they aren't, might have some helpful suggestions. Then we have the fundamental guideline, courtesy and respect towards everyone are required. This is just essential. You absolutely must have it because, as we know, when tempers rise and people start being rude to each other, their thinking capacity deteriorates. So you have to insist on this one. And don't be intimidated by anger. I saw this wonderful quote the other day. Evolutionary psychologists tell us that anger evolved in the service of bargaining to resolve conflicts of interest in favor of the angry individual. This is not in your handout because I just read it yesterday. But I thought that's really helpful to remember. When somebody is getting angry, he's using that or she as a weapon to achieve a goal and you shouldn't be intimidated by it. So there are five kinds of remarks that are inappropriate at meetings run according to Robert's rules and they are simply not allowed. The first is personal remarks about other members, except for conflict of interest, and I'm sure you have a policy about that. The next one is discourteous remarks, insulting language or attacks. Inflammatory language is not allowed, as we saw, the words flaming liberals. Criticizing past actions of the group is not allowed with two exceptions. If the subject is under discussion and everyone is talking about it, then you can criticize it. Or if you're going to propose to amend or rescind the action as the end of your speech, you may. But you just can't randomly say, building that skateboard park was the worst thing our city ever did. You could say, building that skateboard park was the worst thing our city ever did and I move, we tear it down. That's okay, but you just can't randomly criticize. And then the last is remarks that are not germane or relevant to the discussion. Germane is just a jargon word for relevant. So that's kind of the big umbrella that covers everything else. So again, I'll send you a paper, Inappropriate Remarks on Local Government Councils. So let's have some examples.
That's a flat outright lie.
So Robert says, the measure, not the member, is the subject of debate. The moment the chair hears such words as fraud, liar, or lie used about a member in debate, he must act immediately and decisively to correct the matter and prevent its repetition. Here's another one.
You're only saying that because you're a banker.
So we can't be talking about people's personal qualities.
You're only
And here's another.
I think we're being kind of hasty here. If you studied the zodiac, you'd know that the sun is in the house of Taurus these days. Here's what my horoscope said this morning. You need to reach a decision organically. There's no way for you to rush it.
So we had that in our little script and that's not relevant. That's not germane. Body language and gestures must also be respectful. No rolling your eyes, shrugging, sighing, making faces. And a member can raise a point of order that my colleague is failing to display courtesy in body language and expression. I was very happy when I came up with this because I think it's a very polite way of making the point. Now, what about the deer in the headlights problem? You hear something, you know that it's off, but how do you quickly identify it and label it and respond to it? So we have a tool for that, which is our Wait, Wait Cheat Sheet, which I know that at least some of you on this council are familiar with. It's a laminated cheat sheet. A friend of mine calls it my placemat. And it's got down the side, the inappropriate remarks and mistakes. And then across the top, three different columns that tell you what you can say if you're the chair and someone makes a mistake or if you're a member speaking about another member or if you're a member speaking about the chair. And it's the only source that I know of for that information, for what you can say about the chair. So this, my other materials, you're most welcome to share. This is proprietary. We sell it on our website, so I ask you not to duplicate it. Now, an important note here, we're speaking about discussion within council meetings. These prohibitions do not apply to the public when they are giving public comment, as we will discuss below. So here are our sample discussion guidelines for local governments and I will be including them also in the packet. And again, you're very welcome to adapt any of it that is useful for you. So I'm going to stop the share now and we have some time for discussion. How useful do these ideas seem to you on your council or your commission?
Senator Howie?
So Chair, I would personally, I guess, like, disagree or nuance of point made. There have been occasions where round robin has been used to actually stall debate. Robert rules very, the Robert rule is very explicit that members of the committee should seek to be recognized and that the chair then assigns the floor according to that recognition. There are times in debate that I want to listen and not participate in the argument, so I don't need to be asked. So I don't wave my hand. I do agree that after those who feel they want to participate or have points they want to get forward, that we then can go into round robin and pick up any forward ones. But I disagree with it as a kickoff after one-time round, dramatically going around robin. It has been used by this chair, but by other chairs to control debate and not necessarily in a good manner. So I just wanted to throw that nuance out.
Thank you. Well, that's a, that's a great comment. And it's strictly an optional way, you know, in order to do it, the chair would have to say, is there any objection to using the round robin? And if someone objected, then you'd take a vote as to whether you wanted to discuss in that way. And if it doesn't work, then that's fine. It's just something that I like to make available to people as a possibility, but thank you for your comment.
And I'm not disagreeing that it is a tool for the chair to use. Totally. And get the nuance of when to use it. If the debate is stalling, absolutely.
Very good.
If I have like the option where it's annoying me to speak a second time until I run petitions to do so, I have spoken.
Please, I just interpret to those who wish or those who have asked to be recognized by chair. If you have not been asked to recognize by chair, obviously you're not wishing to speak.
Yes, that's generally true. That's why we set it up. That's why we phrase it.
Yeah. Actually, concern, mention any other questions?
Yeah, if I understood the round robin method, when it was described, it's, it's the speaker's prerogative to say, I don't have anything to say right now. Come back to me later as well. So, so you can keep on listening. I'm trying to rack my, I'm racking my brain trying to think of the time when you did not want to participate in the debate.
And I made the meeting long and you did the job. I'm sorry.
Senator, thanks.
I want to point out that I'm not lurking. The host has turned my camera off. I don't know why. Apparently I did something wrong. I think that, and I approached you with this before and I kind of want to bring it up in this instance is it's, you know, that the chair, the chair as a participant in meeting has to follow the same rules. I think that's really interesting because we've had, there's times in the past and we've seen even at the federal level, you see where the chair will dominate discussion at times under the auspice of a point of information. But really, it's, it's, you know, maybe a little, maybe what I'm asking is, how is the, as opposed to getting into a constant, you know, point of order and appeal and those sorts of things, how can a council make sure that, that the chair is also following the, the don't speak twice or don't dominate the conversation process? Not this, not this chair, by the way, I want to point out.
So thank you for that question, Matt, and I do indeed recall our discussions about it. I, I'm in favor myself of having a one-on-one conversation and talking with the chair about the issue and maybe, you know, bringing in the attorney as well because there have been cases where, where, I mean, there are cases where chairs, especially if I may say so, strong mayors, elected mayors, and we will talk about that a little bit later, really have a very grandiose vision of their role. And they, they speak too much and they correct too much and they're too involved in the discussion. And I've definitely seen it happen. So I think I'm always in favor of an informal discussion if possible, which could be held if a couple of members are concerned. Then if it doesn't work, then all one has really is, is these methods during the meeting and hoping that the majority are going to be on board, that the majority are going to agree as to what constitutes a reasonable amount of guidance. It's a really tricky thing because the chair is guiding and controlling, but is not supposed to be intruding. Yeah, I, you may remember that phrase, I think. I think I had it in there without lecturing or dominating. I think in some cases, we've seen a lot of lecturing going on.
Senator Howie?
Isn't there an option also for two committee members to basically appeal the assignment of the floor assignment, thereby advising the chair that they need to get in the recollection queue themselves versus assuming priority?
Sure, sure. I mean, if you, if you, if in your view, the chair is not following the rules for assigning the floor, then you can certainly make a point of order or appeal it if necessary. I've just been having a big go-round with somebody who's very upset that members in her, in her political, in her legislative district, to call a motion to adjourn when they don't want to deal with something. And she wanted to know what the chair could do about it. And I told her, well, you know, if the chair, if someone has the right to be recognized, if they have the right to the floor, then they have the right to make any legitimate motion. The chair can't say, well, I'm not going to recognize your motion to adjourn because we have other important work to do. That's not allowed. So you hope that a majority of the body there will agree about the work to be done. Other thoughts? Other questions? Okay, well, then let's go on. Somebody has a hand raised? No. It's just my raise hand function at the bottom. All right. Well, then let's look at motions and amendments. So in our Jurassic Parliament system, which I know some of you are familiar with, main motion is represented by a Tyrannosaurus Rex. So a main motion is the usual and customary way to start the action of discussion and decision-making. For small boards, up to about 12 people, it's okay to have a discussion before a motion is moved. But Jurassic Parliament recommends moving the motion before discussing it whenever possible. So here we are with our main motion. So we recommend this sequence. The staff presents the proposal in writing and answers any questions. Each council member may ask one or two questions, then the next member has a turn. Then the motion is moved and seconded. Then the members discuss the motion and may amend it, and then the members vote on the motion. So is this roughly what you do in your meetings? How do you deal with it?
We'll have a council member read in a summary and motion. And then we'll have a second. And then we actually go to public comments and then we go to discussion.
Do you have a separate time for asking staff any questions about it?
That's part of, so there could be a presentation after public comments. There could be questions to the staff as part of the discussion.
Okay, well, that's fine. That sounds Okay, well, that's fine. That sounds perfectly fine. No problem there. What I do see sometimes is situations where councils have set up a period of informational presentation and questions, and then it sort of slides into discussion. You know, a staff member says something and a councilor says, well, wouldn't it be better if we did such and so, and they kind of go off down the river, whereas if what, what you're doing, having the questions as part of the discussion, I think that's fine. Matt?
Yeah, I'm curious just because the way this is, the way you presented it here. Is there, can you describe a situation where, um, I'm sure, not sure the question, I'm trying to, trying to describe the question, but I don't have it fully formed in my head. But if we're doing, if we're having a presentation before the motion.
Right?
Which is not what we do. We, we move in second and put the, with the motion on the table right from the beginning, even before staff does a presentation.
That's fine.
I'm just thinking of a situation where would it be better? Or what, what sort of situation could arise from having it be done this way, the way you presented it? To where the motion actually didn't happen? And then what sort of, what sort of, how, how we get off the rails, I think that if we didn't put the motion in right away.
Oh, keep on doing that. Keep on doing that. I think it's great. I think it's really a, a good thing. What, 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 I have to propose this sequence because people resist making motions. I actually worked with a city council where they would not make the motion unless they were convinced they were going to pass it. That's completely wrong. You know, it's complete denial of what, of what Robert says. So when I recommend this sequence, I'm thinking of cities that are not as well-disciplined and orderly as you. So keep it up. Keep on doing what you're doing. Councilmember Ethan?
Yeah, it seems like, uh, one reason for not making a motion is, um, if I'm reading this right, you're, you, you are not allowed to argue against a motion that you have made.
Correct.
So if you are uncertain as to whether or not you want to support the motion, that would be a reason not to make the motion.
That's right. Let a colleague make it.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so, um.
Can you, can you speak to that?
Yeah.
I'm a little clear. Uh, because I'll be truthful, I have made motions in the past and argued against them. Uh, more importantly, that the matter at hand get on the table, get discussed for full knowledge of, of the council, even if the decision is not to go that direction, at least there was that sharing of information.
Well, Robert's rule is a member may not speak against a motion that they have made. They can vote against it, but they can't speak against it. And if they have changed their, if they made it and then they changed their mind, the usual thing is to ask permission to withdraw the motion. So I, I really like the idea that don't move it unless you're feeling pretty positive towards it.
Yeah, because our, our standard practice is the chair of the committee that the, that the, if it's an agenda bill item or, or, or uh, such that where there's a motion, um, on the table, that the chair of that committee is the one that actually makes the motion. But not necessarily that chair is in support of motion. So we should maybe.
Well, you should think about that. You should think about that. And you know, you can, I mean, you can, you can set up a special rule of order that people may speak against the motion they made. I mean, you, you are not, we're going to talk about that. Yes, Councilmember Ethan?
I was just going to ask if it was possible to, to make a, make a motion for the sake of discussion without, uh, without committing one way or the other. It, it seems strange to me that you would have to commit to which way you're going to vote on a motion or speak to a motion uh, in order to have the discussion about the motion. It's, um, you know, I, I, I think it, there, to a certain extent, it assumes that everyone's already made up their mind before the motion's ever made.
No, no.
Counterproductive.
No, everyone hasn't.
But the person who makes the motion has to have.
Well, according to Robert, the person who makes the motion has to be willing to refrain from speaking against it. One option that you could, I mean, you could go back to the, the method that I proposed where you could have, you know, you could, the, the staff presenting the proposal and questions and everything before somebody moves it. That would help people get informed and see what they think. But although it's commonly said, the phrase, I move this motion for the sake of discussion is inaccurate in Robert. Rather, I would suggest change your rules, pass a special rule of order that says members may speak against a motion that they have made. And we'll talk about that. We'll talk about special rules of order. I mean, some of Robert is not logical. There's no question about that. So you have your hand up again?
Yeah, so, um, what is the, what is the effect on, on proceedings if the person who makes the motion withdraws the motion?
Well, they can't withdraw it unilaterally. The person who makes the motion can ask permission to withdraw it.
Okay, and then if, if I've, if I've made a motion.
Right.
Thinking, oh, this, this seems reasonable to me, and then I've heard discussion, and I realize I was off my net thinking it was reasonable, and I asked to, to withdraw the motion. And that's denied. Have I allowed myself at that point to speak against the motion?
Nope, not according to Robert. You lose vote against it.
Well, I'm never going to move anything ever.
That's why we would need to have this in our council rules and procedures. Have a rule and that just put in there that, uh, the motion, you know, a member can make, make a motion and has the ability to speak against it.
That's it, the, the, yeah, I, I think we need to do that because I think the idea that, that in order to make, if you make a motion, you're aced out of the at one half of the debate is.
Yeah.
I don't think it would work with our council.
We've not done that in practice, but we should, we should put a rule in there or something. F and A has a task ahead of them.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So I was just, uh, I guess it's a sharing the lessons learned that they need to take to other bodies, ask for simple. And that being, uh, if the bodies choose to take public comment as part of an agenda of the motion. Uh, our lesson learned was very specific that we did that public comment right after the motion was moved and seconded. So that, uh, the public comment could be part of the council debate, or taking the conservation part of council debate. Uh, and also that, uh, if originally we had it at the end, and it gave the public the last word in the debate, which often was a a difficult place for it to end up. So it was just, again, a lesson learned to pass on to other, other bodies, then if they so choose, it's probably best to have that public comment right after the motion was seconded, so that can be part of the proceedings from there on, not just at that.
Very good. Very good. Okay, so obviously lots to think about here. Um, and here I was, I'm giving advice which doesn't apply to you because of the way you handle things. And just to mention that it's perfectly fine to include proposed or draft motions in an agenda, but you're not obliged to take them up. You know, sometimes newly electeds get upset about that, and they say, well, wait a minute, how come we've got this motion here as a draft? But that's, that's a very legitimate way to do because your business is complex. And a lot of times you want to have an agenda bill that, that deals with that complexity appropriately. So when can you make a brand new motion? Well, if the agenda contains a draft motion in an agenda bill, you can move it at the proper time. You can make a motion spontaneously when a subject is being discussed, if it is germane. For instance, you know, if this were a working meeting rather than a study session, you could say, I move that the staff be directed to prepare an amendment to our council rules to allow members to speak against their own motions. And if your council includes new business, you can make a motion spontaneously under that agenda. What you can't do is what I saw last month, where a nonprofit was presented with a proclamation from the city honoring their work. And in accepting it, the executive director said, and thank you so much for this, and it's really wonderful, and we hope that you'll give us $5,000 this year, the way you did last year. And then when that was finished, a councilor said, I move that we give them $5,000. Well, you can't do that. You can't just make motions kind of randomly. It has to be at a proper time. And if your uh, uh, agenda includes new business, you can make a new motion then, but most cities don't want to do that. And here's another little gem from C-TAC. The city council desires to provide adequate time for administration and staff analysis, fight fact finding and preparation. Except in extraordinary or unusual circumstances, all items that are not routine in nature shall, when presented, include a completed council agenda bill. So that's just the reality, you know, of the complex organism that your city is. Now, there are several characteristics of a main motion. It should be in writing, if at all possible. You can project it on a screen, or you've got it in a written packet, or there are, when you're back in person, three-part motion forms, where a person writes the motion down, the chair gets one copy, and the secretary gets one copy. A main motion should be clear and unambiguous. Don't say, I move what he just said. Or so moved. A main motion should be phrased in the grammatical positive. I saw a council where they made a motion not to adopt an ordinance. Don't do that. Don't do that. Make the motion to adopt the ordinance, and then if you don't like it, vote it down. But when you put a not into a motion, you really confuse people. A main motion must comply with the bylaws and the procedural law of the land. If you have a committee rule that a member may serve as chair of the committee for only one year at a time, you can't have a motion to appoint Ann McFarland for a second year. Ethan?
So I, I think my question just goes back to the same question that we were talking about before. You might make a motion not to do something if that's what you, you are, uh, willing to defend. But you, you know, if you can't, if you can't make a motion that you, that you disagree with, or that you don't plan on, uh, or that you plan on possibly, uh, debating against, then, um, then grammar be damned, and I can't believe I just said grammar be damned. Uh, it's not something I would ever say, but, um, uh, but it, it seems like some, sometimes the Robert's Rules of Order could hamstring you into doing something like that.
You can make a motion to reject this proposal.
Okay.
You just can't make a motion not to accept this proposal. You can use verbs to achieve your goal. But somebody wrote me and said, if the motion, uh, not to allow Sissy to run a lemonade stand is defeated, does that mean that she has the right to run the lemonade stand? No, it just means that the motion was defeated. When not gets written into a motion, it tends to confuse the issue and the people involved. So referring to grammar, as I'm so glad you basically do, you can say, you know, I move that we reject this proposal. But if you have an ordinance, you know, moving not to adopt it is just ridiculous, if I may say so. Now, another big important point is you can only have one main motion at a time. Yes, Councilmember Joe?
Uh, right. Okay, uh, so if we have a, um, uh, a motion on the table, and I, I don't want it to happen. I could, can I move to reject that motion, or should I just ask council and say, I think that we should vote against this? And is there a meaningful difference between rejecting an action versus just the, uh, the action not passing? Does that make sense?
If you have a motion, you may not move to reject it, but you may tell everybody, this is terrible, vote it down. I mean, your, 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 your action you're taking, here's the motion, that we hire a herd of goats. So you're either going to approve hiring the herd of goats, or you're going to amend it, or you're going to vote against it. If you vote against it, it's gone. You just vote it down.
So a main motion could be to reject something?
Well, it shouldn't be unless it's necessary.
Right.
Suppose that, um, suppose that the Chamber of Commerce has come and asked you to participate in dinosaur days. It's much nicer just to say, we're not going to take this up or to vote it down than to say, we reject your proposal not to participate, to participate in dinosaur days. I mean, in general, you ought to be able, one ought to be able to manage using motions. And that's why we're doing this, is to try to give you a sense of how they work. Let me grab my dinosaur.
See, uh, but and you can't make a motion reject, but you can make a motion to table.
Well, you know, table is a whole nother thing, which we, uh, is not allowed, you're not allowed to use, under Robert, I'm always under Robert, you know, you're not allowed to table a motion in order to kill it. But you are allowed to use a motion, which has a very odd title. It's called motion to postpone indefinitely. So if you don't want to do something and you don't want to take a vote on it, maybe you don't want to insult the Chamber of Commerce by voting their proposal down, you can move to postpone it indefinitely, which means you're neither approving it nor denying it. So that's, uh, that's intermediate parliamentary procedure. If we have time at the end, we can talk more about table and about that. But right now, I would like to charge ahead so that we can talk more about main motions. So we have a main motion before us to hire a herd of goats. And somebody says, you know, I think that goats are a terrible idea. You remember in the skit, she said, I move that we use industrial strength weed killer. Well, you can't do that. This is just Robert, you see his military background, one thing at a time. We deal with this one, and then when it's gone, then we can have a new proposal for industrial strength weed killer, if that's what we want. So one thing at a time is one of our four fundamental guidelines. How do you introduce a main motion? I move that. All you say is, I move that. Now, the member has the responsibility of formulating the motion. Don't mix up your ideas about the subject with the motion itself. Save those for debate. We sometimes hear this. I've been noticing that the number of wild cats is increasing in our city, and they're getting stomped on by bigger dinosaurs. It's important that the city do something to protect them, so I think allowing caddios would be great. This will make the little kitties safer. That is a way to drive your esteemed city clerk crazy. Don't do that. Just say, I move that residents be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. You just state what the motion is. And you can request a moment to write it down if necessary. And then we have a second. Councilmember Smith seconds the motion. Or if you're live, just second, second the motion. So if the clerk didn't hear who seconded the motion, the clerk should speak up. The clerk inquires who seconded the motion. And in general, the clerk must do this when lack of clarity prevents doing the job, and the council must be patient. So you second the motion to show that you would like to talk about it. There's no need to be recognized. You just call out second. And it's okay to second a motion you disagree with if you want to explain why it's a bad idea. None of those restrictions apply to somebody who seconds the motion. If there's no second, the chair says, there being no second, the motion will not be considered, and then moves immediately to the next item of business. Now, this is where I pointed out that you can't speak against your own motion. Now, if you're out driving and you come up to a stop sign, a light, you don't have to think, should I step on the brakes or step on the gas? You know immediately and intuitively what to do because you have internalized the system of traffic management. So I want you to internalize this system of eight steps to process a motion. If you printed out the handout, I believe I included a worksheet that you can fill out. But if you don't have that, just find a blank piece of paper, if you would, and jot down these eight steps because they're really important and they apply quite frequently. So they are, the member makes the motion. Another member seconds the motion. The chair states the motion, which sometimes doesn't happen. Now, members debate and or amend the motion. The chair restates the motion and calls for the vote. The members vote on the motion. The chair states the results of the vote, whether the motion passes or fails, and what happens next as a result of the vote. And then the chair states the next item of business. So these are the eight steps, and notice that amendments come in at step four during discussion. Ethan?
I think this is the way we do it, but do we have like a 3.5? Is that where public comment would come in? I think this is the way we do it, but do we have like a 3.5? Is that where public comment would come in?
So we're, here, I'm just outlining the processing of the, of the motion itself. So I hope you've got that, that thing. I hope I included it. So here we, yes, good. So here we have our main motion. Residents will be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. And somebody says, "Point of information, point of information, Chair, I'm confused. What exactly is a catio?" And the chair replies, "A catio is a patio for cats. Here's an example." And so shows the members what a catio would look like. Now, point of information is a question. It's also called request for information. It cannot be used to give information. People sometimes say, "Point of information." Councilmembers should know that when our neighboring city tried this last year, it was a disaster. That's debate. That's not a point of information. So that's why the chair says, "State your question," and you saw that in the skit as well. Now, point of clarification does not exist. Point of clarification does not exist. If you, as a council member, think someone made a mistake, you must address that when your turn for debate arrives. Although the mayor, or the attorney, or the city administrator may speak up when a factual mistake is made. But as a council member, you don't get to say, "Point of clarification, you know, my colleagues should know, blah, blah, blah." So in that processing, step three is very important. The presider must repeat the motion, or have the clerk repeat it, so that everyone knows what we're actually discussing. And after step three, the motion belongs to the group as a whole, not to the person who made it. Matt?
So what is the process then, when somebody does a point of clarification? Or says point of information, but doesn't ask a question and states?
The chair should interrupt and say, "The purpose of the motion, point of information, is to seek information." What information does the member need in order to decide how to vote? So you get the focus back on the voting. And of course, a member could make a point of order also. So the chair says, "Yes, Councilmember Joe."
And in the case, following up on my, uh, call of council member here, in the case of a point of clarification, could another council member, or a member of the board, whatever it is, say, uh, a point of order? There's no such thing as one clarification?
Absolutely, absolutely. That should, the point should be made during debate. That's what it comes down to. So the chair says, "It's been moved and seconded that residents be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. Is there any discussion?" So now we're at stage four. We're going to have discussion. The general contractor says, "I feel that caddios will allow our dear feline friends to experience the outdoors without getting hurt or endangering other wildlife. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this motion." And the photographer says, "I'm in favor. My cousin has built a catio, and her little pet Fuzzy is completely at home in it, as you can see from this picture." So there's Fuzzy, you know, just having a great time. And then the architect, Matt, says, "I think this is a terrible idea. Caddios are intrusive and will ruin the look of our city. Here's an example I saw when I visited Dino Dome last week. We don't want this kind of ugly building in beautiful Dynopolis." So the architect is dead against it. So we have discussion on the motion. And when it seems that discussion is finished, the chair asks, "Is there any further discussion, or are you ready to vote?" And then if no one speaks up, takes the vote. This is, these are rhetorical questions to see if anyone wishes to speak further, or if the group is ready to vote, uh, unless you have a two-time limit, as we discussed. So again, step five is very important. The chair must repeat the motion before the vote is taken so that everyone knows what we're actually voting on. And the way the chair states it is the official text of the motion. Have you ever been at a meeting where once the vote was taken, somebody says, "What did we just approve?" And nobody knows exactly what it was? You know, it, it, it's happened. It's happened to me. So to vote, if it's voice vote, the chair repeats the motion. The chair says, "All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no." The chair announces the results of the vote, whether the motion passes or fails, and what will happen next as a result of the vote. Not repeating the whole thing, but just what's going to happen next. And then the chair answers, that announces the next item of business. So the ayes have it, the motion passes, and residents will be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. Or the noes have it, the motion fails, and we will not implement this proposal. So notice that on a voice vote, the chair must call for the negative vote, even if it seems perfectly obvious that the motion is unanimous. No debate during voting. Nothing can interrupt the voting process. Members are not allowed to explain their, their vote during the vote or afterwards, and even a point of order must wait until the result of the vote is announced. A member may change their vote up until the time the chair announces the result. After that time, it takes unanimous consent of the body, everyone agreeing, for the member to change their vote. And once the chair has moved on to the next item of business, according to Robert, it's too late to change a vote. Now, under Robert's rules, to abstain is to do nothing, and abstentions are not counted. The chair does not call for abstentions, but you, as a public body, likely are going to count abstentions. And you have a rule that an abstention is counted as a yes vote. Some councils have a rule that an abstention is counted as a no vote. We recommend against these approaches. We like Robert's guidance of giving the member the freedom to abstain at his or her discretion. If you have a conflict of interest, you should recuse yourself from the vote. Recusal is a special form of abstention, but talk to your attorney before the meeting. Don't spring it during the meeting itself. It may also be that recusal is not enough. M R S C has a very interesting post, "Resolving Financial Conflicts of Interest Is Abstaining From Voting Enough." So you might want to take a look at that as you think about your rules. Unanimous consent is a very useful form of voting. It's a kind of fast track. It's very efficient for minor procedural matters. The presider suggests something, and if you agree, you remain silent. Your silence means consent. But if you don't want to proceed in this way, if you want a proper vote, you say objection. And then the presider abandons the fast track to use the regular method. Now, suppose you want to improve your motion. We're going to use the motion to amend. Amendment stands, we use dimetridone for amendment. So you amend a motion to improve it, unless you're the US Congress, but we're not going to go there. And the amendment applies to the main motion. The amendment must be germane, which means relevant. And anyone may move to amend, even the person who made the motion. You might look a little foolish if you make a motion and you propose to change it a few minutes later, but there's no prohibition. So the engineer says, "I move that we amend the motion by adding the words, provided that the plan for each catio is approved by the design review board." So if it's adopted, it will read, "Residents will be authorized to build caddios in their private yards, provided that the plan for each catio is approved by the design review board." So there are four different ways to amend. You can add or insert words. You can strike out words. You can strike out words and insert words in their place. And you can substitute, which is tricky. I recommend that councils not use substitute amendments. And the amendment is processed using the same eight steps we just saw for a main motion. Hooray! You see how handy it is to learn those. Now, the challenge is, and I know you know this, but I have to mention it. We vote on amendments before we vote on the main motion. We're trying to make the main motion as good as possible to perfect the motion. So the amendment blocks the main motion. And I'm going to stop the share and just show you that in a little more graphic detail. So here we are, and we've got our main motion. Residents will be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. Somebody proposes an amendment to add the words, "Provided that the design of the catio has been approved by the design review board." So now this guy retreats, and we're all focused on the amendment, and we're discussing this amendment. And maybe we like it, or maybe we don't. If we like it and we pass it, it becomes a part of the main motion. We have an amended main motion, and then we go on to continue discussion. Or if we don't like it, and we vote it down, we throw it away, and we go back to our main motion. So I'm going to rescue. This was how I got started with Jurassic Parliament. It was long ago, when the original movie was such a hit. I was cleaning my son Steve's bedroom. He just got married last October, so it tells it was a long time ago. And there he was with all his toys. This is an original Jurassic Parliament dimetridone. It says JP on there, right from the beginning. And I thought, you know, we can use a main motion, the T-Rex, to be the main motion. And we can use the dimetridone to show that the amendment blocks the main motion. And that was the beginning. That was the whole genesis of my business. And so Steve has forgiven me for stealing his dinosaurs, and I owe it all to him and to Steven Spielberg. That's Jurassic Parliament in a nutshell. All right, so here we are, and the amendment blocks the main motion. And we are going to vote on it and decide. So people sometimes get confused. Yes, Joe?
First of all, uh, the T-Rex, I believe, is from the prepatious period of Jurassic and dimetridone, like a permian. But anyway, regardless.
I can see your background as a scientist.
How about, uh, amending an amendment? Is that a thing? So could you stack multiple dinosaurs?
Well, not too many.
Amendment to the main motion?
Not, not too many multiples. Let me show you what you can do. So we've got our, we've got our main motion. We've got our amendment, right? Uh, provided that it's approved by the design review board. So someone can propose an amendment to the amendment, which will be a tiny dimetridone, that we strike the words "design review board" and insert the words "a licensed architect." Okay, then we're going to strike "design review board" and insert a licensed architect. Again, we discuss this guy, and we vote on it, and if it's passed, it becomes a part of the amendment. Or if it fails, we toss it away. And then we go back to devote on that, and then on the main motion. So it's possible to have that much, but no more. No more. So you can have a main motion, you can have a primary amendment, you can have a secondary amendment, but you can't go beyond that. So, and once the fate of the amendment has been decided, debate continues on the main motion. I, I may also remember, mention, if I may, Councilmember Joe, that you are only the second person in 20 years of doing this, who has pointed out the incorrectness of my vocabulary. So kudos to you. All right, so once you've dealt with one amendment, you may have others, provided that they apply to a different aspect of the main motion. Like we could have an amendment to start in 2024, or something like that. It takes special actions, reconsideration, to go back and change something that we've already amended. So after all the amendments have been processed, the body still must vote on the amended main motion. Now, I just want to mention friendly amendment. People often process friendly amendment the wrong way. Do not turn to the maker and seconder to ask if they accept the amendment. This gives them improper power. You handle it the same as any other amendment. You ask, "Is there a second?", and you go ahead. Because once a motion has been stated by the chair, the maker and the seconder have the same rights as any other member. Then what about "call the question," which we represent by triceratops? People also, also often process this motion wrong. They call out "question," and they think you have to stop debate right now. That's not correct at all. You have to be recognized to make this motion. It requires a second. It cannot be debated. Thank goodness. We can't debate on whether to stop debate. And it can't be amended, and it takes a two-thirds vote to pass. Robert's rules often requires a two-thirds vote when members' rights are limited or extended. So for your council of seven members, what would a two-thirds vote be? What's that? Yes, five members have to vote in favor.
So if there's only, let's say, if we only have six members in, in, like, the council yesterday, we only had six members?
Yes.
Two-thirds, still four, or?
No, no, two-thirds of six is four.
I saw, I just didn't know if it was based on the quorum, or it was based on total number of members.
So, uh, that's a great question, and the general rule is, if, if there's nothing else about it, it's based on the number of people who cast a vote. The number who, people who cast a vote. Now, sometimes there are special other rules, but people really get confused about that because you have different bases for a vote. It can be the number of votes cast. It can be the number of members present. It can be the number of the entire body. It can be the, the fixed membership. But if you have six members present, and if they all vote, four is two-thirds. Ethan?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing a definition in the packet for what "call the question" is. Could you, could you just, could you explain that again? I, I didn't.
No, sorry, I, I, I should have made that clearer. So the motion to call the question, which is a triceratops, is a request to stop debate and vote now. It's a request by an individual member who feels that debate has gone on long enough to stop talking and vote immediately. And so that's why it requires two-thirds, but there is this pernicious nasty habit abroad in the land where somebody says out, calls out "question," and the chair says, "Okay, we have to vote now." And that is so terrible that I focused my slide on that and not on what it actually means, for which I apologize. I'll fix that. Okay?
Okay.
So further questions on motions before we go to our next portion? All right, let's look at who's in charge. So Robert has different rules for small boards, up to about 12 people. In a small board, in general, the chair may make motions, discuss, and vote unless the law, regulations, or bylaws say otherwise. But you have a specific kind of small board, which is that you have an elected mayor. So the mayor is not going to be making motions. In Washington State, a strong mayor by custom can take part in discussion, even though technically not a member of the council. Technically speaking, the mayor is not a council member. And we believe that the mayor should take part. The mayor has important information and a significant perspective for the council. Of course, without dominating the discussion. I do know of at least two cities where there is such a bad blood between the council members and the mayor, that they decline to hear the mayor speak, which I think is really a dereliction of duty on their part, and shows bad faith. So of course, the mayor cannot make motions or vote, except in certain cases of a tie. And the mayor can veto certain actions subject to being overturned by the council. So we have this Citizens Guide to Effective Conduct of Public Meetings that was, this is not Jurassic Parliament. This was prepared by a group of parliamentarians. I will email it to you. And it goes into all that in, in clear detail, and I'm sure you're quite familiar with it as well. We also have this new paper that we just wrote called "Can the Mayor Take Part in Discussion?" So I'll be sending you that as part of our reference materials. Now, in all of this, I'm referring to Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised, 12th Edition, which is abbreviated R O N R. So I hope you won't reveal my secret to my colleagues, my fellow parliamentarians, but I think this is a terrible book. I think Robert's Rules is a terrible book. Robert was a lieutenant colonel in the US Army Corps of Engineers. And he did his first assignment on San Juan Island, when he built a barrier that was going to protect us against the British in case of a war. And when he published his first book in 1876, it was a pocket manual that would literally fit in your coat pocket. And it took off. All across the nation, people were thrilled to have a common understanding of how to run meetings. But I believe that his heirs, his son and grandson and great-grandson, really allowed it to become far too complicated. Very common human problem, improving something until you wreck it. And when I got started in this business, I, I wanted to give up. I thought, "This is too awful." But I realized that there's a core to Robert's rules that we really need. There's a core that's essential for good and fair discussion. And that's what I'm trying to share in Jurassic Parliament. And also, the Robert's Rules people have published Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules in Brief. So this is a good book. You can read it in a weekend, although nobody wants to, but you can. And it's an excellent way to get, I think it's the best short introduction. And if you want either of these, I really recommend the Spiral Bound Editions. Which are available only from the National Association of Parliamentarians. They're much easier to work with than getting a tight little paperback. So just to review, again, I, you're probably familiar with this idea, but there is a hierarchy of authorities. We have the Constitution, federal law, state law. Your charter, articles of incorporation or code, whatever it is that allows you to exist. Then your bylaws or council rules, then special rules of order, which you can pass. And you probably will just put something into your bylaws, but you can pass a special rule of order. And then Robert's Rules of Order comes at the bottom. It's at the bottom of the heap. And your rules have higher authority. You may choose the rules that suit the council best. So here, I'd like to talk about two different types of organizations. One is shaped like a triangle or a pyramid. And at the top, you've got the boss who's in charge. The boss recruits people to do the work of the organization, tells them how to do it, and if they do it badly, fires them. And one feature of this kind of organization is that it has status or rank. And people who are near the boss are higher in status than people who are down below. Now, I don't think that's a bad thing myself. I think we need it in order to have accountability. We need the hierarchy. In order to get the accountability. If all of us who are on this call had the job of building an addition to the city hall. And we all had the same status, we would never succeed. We would never get it done. So this is a very common structure. Every company has a CEO, every hospital has a superintendent, every school has a principal, every army has a general. It's so common that people think of it as being the only kind of organization, but it's not. There's a whole nother kind called a voluntary association. Where a group of people come together to achieve a common purpose. They set up some guidelines for themselves and they select a leader. But the leader is a peer. The leader is an equal with the same status as everyone else and some special responsibilities. So your city council, your planning commission, your advisory committee, your nonprofit boards, your. Red Cross Board, whatever. Those are all voluntary associations. And in a voluntary association, each member has an equal right to speak and to try to persuade others to accept their view. During meetings, the chair controls the process, so the group can make the decisions. And during meetings, the chair is the servant of the group and the group is the final authority. Now, that's the most important thing I'm gonna say today. During meetings, the chair is the servant of the group and the group is the final authority. So you have both types of structure. The council forms a voluntary association. And the mayor and staff form an accountability hierarchy. What is each person's individual authority? When this meeting is over and you walk out on the street, how much authority do you have? Anybody wanna tell me?
None.
None, zero, zip, nada. And I love this way of phrasing it. All members of a governing board share in a joint and collective authority. Which exists and can be exercised only when the group is in session. That's your authority. It's joint and collective. The standard code is the second most commonly used authority for parliamentary procedure. Now, what's your individual power? You know that too. Legislation is the prerogative of the council. The mayor supports the council but does not decide. Administration is the prerogative of the mayor and the council may not interfere. Council members may not do the work of the city. Elected officials care deeply, and sometimes they have special knowledge and expertise. They may make suggestions, but they may not do the work themselves. They must not cross the line. Between legislation and administration, and this is a legal requirement. Your duty is to debate and determine overall strategy, policy and legislation for your city. And leave the details of operations to the mayor and staff. Now, discussion on council motions can and should be vigorous. Express your views freely and don't hold back. But once the vote has been taken, things change. It's okay to disagree. The fact that people have different opinions is a strength. It's a good thing. But we tend to identify with our own position. And when we're defeated, we sometimes take it personally. And that's a mistake, because at the end of the day. The body must unite behind its decision. It's a basic democratic principle that the decision of the majority, voting at a properly called meeting. Is the decision of the body as a whole, and the minority must make it their decision as well. Now, this is a terrible system. But I hold with Winston Churchill, who famously said. Democracy is the worst system of government in all the world, with the exception of those others that have been tried from time to time. So when serving on a public body, members have a duty to uphold the decision of that body, even if they disagree with it. Members may express their disagreement in public, but may not attempt to undermine the decision. Of course, they're free to try to persuade their colleagues during the meeting to change the decision within certain limits. We all wanna be right. It's human nature to be unhappy when you oppose the decision. And our current culture places a strong premium on individuality. So I invite you to commit yourself to a bigger principle than your own views. The principle that after everyone's voice is heard, including the minority, it is the majority that makes the decision. So here's another paper, lost the vote, don't sabotage the council's action. With some examples of what we think of as sabotage. And I just wanna share with you this great quote from Elias Canetti. The ballot box is sacred because the alternative is blood. What you are doing on your council, you council members, you mayor, you staff. Is something that in my view is a miracle. It's really fantastic. Because you are serving your community. Not because you know somebody or you paid a bribe or you have a private army. But because of your commitment to your community. And we see many places in the world where this doesn't happen. And I honor you for all your hard work, because I feel that sometimes. Ordinary residents and citizens don't recognize how hard it is and how hard you have to work for your service. So thank you. It's one of the reasons I really enjoy Jurassic Parliament. Now, a couple of words about the planning commission and for you commissioners out there, and then we'll go on to public comment. So I have found often, I'm sorry to say, that there is confusion about the job of the planning commission. And I like this quote from the city of Bellevue. The work of the planning commission is to carry out the instructions of the council. A planning commission or a citizen advisory committee is a body that has been established in order to do a job. Assigned by someone else. And this can be a challenge. People sometimes feel when they've gotten appointed that they should go. Beyond their remit in order to achieve what they think of as important goals. But commissioners always must frame their work in terms of what the council has asked them to do. And it was actually here in Snoqualmie with the planning commission some years ago that I saw a vivid example. The planning, I don't think any of you commissioners were on that commission at that time, but the commission was considering. Whether to approve a change in the setback from fifty feet to twenty feet. And one of the planning commission members asked. Isn't there a better place in the city to place this hotel? Well, he was asking the wrong question. He was asking a question that had nothing to do with his assignment. Which was to determine whether the setback should be approved or not. What's that?
Oh, I was the chair for that meeting.
Were you? Remember it?
I remember it vividly, yeah.
Uh, certainly stuck with me. So this can be a challenge. And. In Jurassic Parliament, we've identified nine different pitfalls for planning commissions, and I will send you a paper in the packet that includes. Examples of those. So on public comment, I wanna say again that Robert's Rules of Order contains very little guidance on public comment. So what I'm gonna say in the next section comes from my experience over fifteen years of working with local governments. So why public comment? A council meeting is not a meeting of the public. It's not a meeting of the public. It's a meeting of the council that is held in public. And the purpose of the public comment period is to allow the council members to become informed. About the views of the public. It should be carefully structured. You wanna be consistent and have rules that you announce. Public must address their remarks to the chair, not to individual council members or to the audience. You wanna follow time limits and speakers may not donate their time to someone else. Don't dialogue. We strongly recommend you don't get into back and forth with the public. And if you respond to some speakers but not to others, it can be interpreted as showing bias. This was a phrase a attendee gave me. We tell the public it is a one-way communication to the council. Now, the public may have different expectations. They may come to the meeting looking for answers to specific questions. They may wanna argue. They may want their remarks on the record. They may wanna raise a point of order. So. Education is critical and you have to repeat yourself. So only the chair may speak to the audience as a whole. Discourage demonstrations, clapping, booing, whistling. These can chill free speech, both for council members and for the public. The courts have found that local governments may limit the time, place and manner of public comment. All such restrictions must be viewpoint neutral. So we recommend setting a time period for public comment and setting a three-minute limit. For individual speakers. If a speaker runs over, interrupt and request that they conclude their remarks or simply inform them, your time is up. Attendees do not have the right to disrupt the meeting. But the courts have found that mere words do not usually constitute disruption. And in general, residents can say whatever they like during public comment. Your rules say the mayor has the authority to preserve order at all meetings of the council. To cause removal of any person from any meeting for disorderly conduct and to enforce the rules of the council. So I think you might wanna think about this. It's a, it's a little bit mushy here. As to what constitutes disorderly conduct. And the courts have found. That disorderly conduct means the meeting cannot continue. The meeting cannot continue. You wanna be very careful about kicking someone out. And I'll send you this paper, Danger Will Robinson, by an attorney that goes into excellent detail about this and what the court precedents are. We believe it's best not to include oral comments in the minutes. Capturing these remarks requires a substantial staff effort. Sometimes citizens want corrections to their remarks. I saw that happen once when I was attending a Snoqualmie City Council meeting and. So the mayor said, okay, we'll postpone approval to the next meeting. That's a waste of time. In our view, the purpose of public comment is fulfilled when the council members have heard the remarks. And I did see in one set of recent minutes where it was simply the speaker's name and the topic. And I think that's a very good way to do it. So how do you act on the dais in this challenging situation where you can't really respond? The chair and the members convey interest and concern by their body language. They should listen to each person speaking as if there were no one else in the room, which is hard to do. Keep a warm and pleasant expression or a neutral face if the speaker is not complimentary. The best approach is to thank each speaker, even if negative, and move on. The chair may provide brief factual information if appropriate, which must not degenerate into lecturing or criticism. Don't put staff on the spot. Invite people to address questions to staff separately, and of course, be sure to follow up. At the end of the public comment period, the chair should thank the public for attending always. Explain that while there's not a time for dialogue, all comments and questions are taken seriously. Sincerity and warmth on the part of the chair will make a big difference to the experience that the public has at your meeting. So obviously, and you all know this, it's essential for you to be in touch with your public, to be responsive and to appear responsive. So given the limitations of the public comment period, we recommend maintaining other channels for dialogue. Community forums, personal discussions, coffee with the council, always less than a quorum. A forum on your website, surveys. There's lots of information now out there about how to engage with your public, both in person and virtually. And I will send you our guidelines for public comment. We're updating this. To take account both the new era of web meetings and also the terrible deterioration in public behavior. But it's not ready yet, but I'll send you the current one. And here's, also I'll send you a sample public comment announcement. You can take a look at it, see if it might have an idea or two for you. And remember, your job is to serve your council and your community with your best judgment. Even if public pressure urges you to do something different. So we have this paper, When Public Pressure is Intense, that might be helpful. So I'd like to talk now about the right kind of control. In order to apply everything that I've been talking about tonight, you've got to have three things. You have to have a knowledge of how this system works, which you're getting by attending. You have to have a majority on your council in favor of civility and this system. The city of Puyallup a few years ago revoked its rules of civility. They've put them back, but if you do that, this is not gonna work. And the chair has to have the personal moxie, the hatsba, the energy and the drive to put it all into practice. It's not easy. You know, it's easier to drift. So the chair must control who speaks when. The chair serves as a benevolent dictator, enforcing the rules that the group has chosen. And individual members must seek recognition before speaking. If someone speaks up without being recognized, the chair must stop them. If someone speaks out of turn, the chair must interrupt them. If someone makes insulting remarks, the chair must cut them off. And members have a duty to obey the chair's directions. If they disagree, they can't argue back. What can they do? Yes, an appeal or point of order, absolutely. And in so doing, members are following the basic fundamental principles of our society, of our constitution. Whereby it is the people as a whole who determine our government and not individual princes or potentates. So how should you control? Well, in some respects, you're like Napoleon crossing the Alps, you know? You have to be very clear, because you know which direction the council is going on. You as chair know more about the process than anyone else. So you have to repeat yourself and state the obvious to help bring everyone along. We recommend keeping things moving. Be brisk, speak crisply. Recently, I heard these phrases. Well, I guess the agenda is adopted. Or I'll kind of get a thumbs up from the board next week. Don't say that. Don't say those wishy-washy things. Say the agenda is adopted, our next item of business is. We, our goal is to be firm but not harsh. Firm but not harsh. And I will send you these language tips for meeting management. Which will give you some suggested language. Again, it seems archaic and out of date, but it's really, really helpful. It really does the job. And when in doubt, ask the group. I know I keep hammering on this, but it's so important. The chair believes that remarks about UFOs landing at our airfield are not your main. And will ask the council to decide whether the council member may continue speaking on this topic. All those who believe the council member may continue speaking, please say aye. Aye. All those who believe the council member may not continue, please say no, no. The ayes have it and the council member may continue speaking, or the noes have it and the council member will cease from speaking. This is just a wonderful way to show your good faith and help things move along. Now, I wanna share with you this quote from Richard Rohr. Why do we need rules? He says, win/lose is the only game most of us understand. We have a constant unspoken need for domination and actually find no enjoyment in win-win situations. Now, I'm sure that's not true of you. I'm sure that everybody who's on this call is at a higher spiritual level. But as for me, if I'm in a fight, I wanna win it. And so the thing to remember, if you feel yourself hardening into a combat position, is that your meetings are not a fight. And that you need to think, take a step back and take a deep breath and find some other way to approach. Our vision is that each member expresses their personal views on topics before the council with vigor, energy, commitment and respect. Once the vote is taken, personal opinions and political views are less important than the majority vote of the council. Members accept the decision and move on without ranker or bitterness. So in conclusion, I want to invite you to subscribe to our monthly e-newsletter. I know some of you already are subscribers. We try to keep it short and interesting. And we also have a blog, which is roughly weekly, if you like more detail. And feel free to email me anytime. I love parliamentary questions and I'll certainly do. I love parliamentary questions and I'll certainly do my best to answer what questions you may have. This is our book, "Mastering Council Meetings", which many people have spoken very highly of. It's written just for you. It's written for elected officials and local governments. It's the only book of its kind that I'm aware of. So I said you'd be able to apply the authority of the chair and the group correctly, follow best practices for fair and inclusive discussion, respond to disorder and difficult people, make motions and amendments and run effective public comment sessions. So what's the purpose of your meetings? Debate and determine overall strategy, policy and legislation for your city. Leave the details of operations to the mayor and staff. Here's a paper I'll send you. Paradoxical title, "The Chair Is Not in Charge of Your Meeting." Of course, in some ways the chair is, but ultimately it's you all. These are the four fundamental guidelines we've covered. The chair is the servant of the group and the group is the final authority. All members have equal rights, privileges and obligations. To ensure this, no one may speak a second time till everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. Courtesy and respect are essential at all times and one thing at a time. Again, I'll send you a paper on it. And then we have our essential guidelines for city councils, your colleagues from the city of Tukwila. These are the five kinds of inappropriate remarks. And these are what we see as best practices for public comment. Set time limits for public comment and for individual speeches. Have the public address the chair and have the chair respond. Don't engage in dialogue with the public, but have arrangements to answer their questions afterwards. Speakers may not donate their time and on the dais, make the effort to be and to appear to be listening intently to all speakers. Kindness is within our power, liking is not. I love this quote from Samuel Johnson. "We cannot make ourselves like our colleagues, but we can be kind to them." And you must be kind to them because serving on a local government board is like being in a marriage arranged by the citizens. Kindness is really your only option. So I said that we were here to invigorate you, to run effective meetings, to serve your community. How about it? Did we do so? Do you feel invigorated?
Yes.
Yeah, very much.
Good, good. Thank you, thank you. So we actually have, if there are any other questions or comments, we have a little bit of time left.
So question on public comment. So we have had occasions where the public comment, which has ranged into factually incorrect and inflammatory against staff. And in this age where everything turns into a video and ends up on YouTube.
Right.
For your prior comments, we are now liable for those statements. What's a effective method of managing that?
So you're not.
Yeah, but I want to hear your guidance.
Well, you're not liable for managing those statements. I, when I talked about liability, I was talking about a situation happened in New Mexico where citizens made complaints about a crosswalk. And then following that, there was an unfortunate accident. And the fact of the comment, which had been recorded in the minutes, was used in a lawsuit against the government body. You, that's why we don't recommend recording. And I did notice, it seemed to me that, as I said, that your minutes are recording less than they did when I was working with the city before. So I was happy to see that. I was also very happy to see that it doesn't appear that you have a handheld mic for speakers who are giving public comment. It looks as if you have a fixed mic on the podium there. That was, I remember the day when that handheld mic was handed out and immediately a community member turned around and started haranguing the crowd. So the courts have been very clear that you cannot limit what people are going to say. That's a criticism. There's actually an Attorney General's opinion saying that you can't prevent citizens from criticizing the staff. You can urge them to submit it through administrative channels. But I don't believe that, that you can stop it. And so i-if you did something different, please do let me know.
Yeah, we actually asked the individuals to conclude their comments. It was a great, inflammatory comments.
Well, you, 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 you could, you could ask that. But I, I guess my point is I don't think you can enforce it. You know, I mean, in, in general, and those of us who have been blessed with children know this, it's not a good thing to have a rule that you say but don't enforce. But sometimes it's your only option. You can say, you know, members, members of the public are requested to speak with courtesy and to refrain from making inflammatory comments. But I don't think you could cut them off if they didn't listen. That's a great point and I think I'll, maybe I'll put that into my next presentation of having a rule that you, that you can't enforce, but you can urge it anyway and hopefully make some difference.
I think at some times we followed up with what's the correct information was.
Yeah.
I think in some of that public comment, we did follow up. Staff followed up with what correct information was.
That's great. I'm all for that. You know, you don't have to, you don't have to let people just spew stuff that's wrong out there and not address it.
Right.
But what I don't want you to be doing is getting into an argument with a community member about whether it was a good idea to open that park or not. You know, that, that, that's where it's problematic. Ethan?
Yeah, I, I, I think I disagree. I absolutely agree with the rules of decorum between council members. But I think that to say to an American that they have to be respectful to elected officials is, is anathema to what America is. They, they have every right to berate and, and be upset. And it is our responsibility as their representatives to hear them, in my opinion.
Well, elected officials, yeah. Staff?
No. Well, I, you know, they're, they, they are employees of the citizens. The citizens pay their, their salaries. And they have a right to speak out if they don't like the way their, their funds are being used. I think that it is incumbent upon us to, to defend and appreciate the staff. But the first amendment is the first amendment. You can get to, get to say what they want to say. And if what they want to say is unpleasant or mean, I think that goes back to the comment about the heat in the kitchen.
Now. If I may, I, 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 no, nobody, nobody is saying that, that you're trying to say to the public that they may not say that. I'm encouraging the request, the request to be courteous, the request to use politeness. But I completely agree, the courts are very clear, you know? And we have in Seattle, the case of Alex Zimmerman, who goes, or at least before Zoom anyway, was going to every meeting that he possibly could attend in the Seattle Council Committees, saying, "You murderers, you Nazis." You know, he was just absolutely as offensive as he could be. And he had the right to do that for his three minutes. I mean, that's, that, the, the courts are very clear about that. And then people sometimes say, "What about the legislature?" Well, the legislature has different rules. You as a local government body, you, you have to allow citizens to criticize completely.
We've got two minutes left. So was there another question?
I, I would just say that I think there are people who were shouting about murderers and Nazis and I think they do a public service. I, I wish all the crazy people would wear a sign and then we know who they are. And I think, you know, I think if you take that tact then and just determine that you will not be offended by idiotic statements, then you, you maintain the power that you want to have over the, over the dialogue.
But remember, the council can set the time, place and manner. So if somebody goes on pause for three minutes, you can cut them off.
Well, and we do, there's not a legislative requirement that we have public.
There is now.
There is now?
Yeah, the legislature passed a new act that public comment must be taken. And it's, it's a little bit odd the way they phrase it to me. It's before or at any meeting at which final action is taken. So it doesn't say you have to have public comment on every topic. It says you have to have it at a meeting. And the MRSC has published two very good columns about this, which I highly recommend. And for instance, if you have a study session and you discuss a certain measure and you take public comment and then you had it at your council meeting, under, as I understand their interpretation, you would not have to take public comment again. But you would have to take it if you had other topics that were being discussed. So it's a little bit complicated. And MRSC is being very helpful in figuring this out. It, we didn't, the Washington, the Constitution does not give that right to citizens. But cities do when they allow public comment. They create what's called a limited public forum. And now the legislature has made it concrete. So that's obviously very important.
One more question, then I know we need to wrap it up. Can you explain serial meeting? What is a walking forum or a serial meeting?
So your, your seven council members, leaving you aside. So if council member A and council member B have a discussion about what, what they want to do and then council member B and council member C have a discussion about what they want to do, that's fine. But if council member C and council member D have a discussion on the same topic, then four council members have participated in a discussion on a topic outside of a meeting. So that is a serial meeting or it's also called a walking forum. And if they were sending each other emails, it would be the same thing. So it's illegal.
Right, we had a topic where something was discussed in a council committee meeting or even at council. And then it was taken by one person and then that person discussed the topic with every council member individually. Is that a serial meeting?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Ethan, last question.
So then that, does that expose me to illegality? If I have a conversation with just one council member?
Not at all.
Well, why wouldn't it? If, if, if I have a conversation with, with Councilman Holloway and then he continues that conversation with Councilman Lusay and then Councilman Lusay not being aware that Councilman Holloway talked to me about it, continues that conversation with Councilman Christiansen, we have ourselves a walking forum. And, and I participated in it without any real power to stop it.
Well, be careful. And talk to your, talk to your attorney.
Much more comfortable than.
And talk to your attorney. Talk to your attorney about this. See how it plays out in practice. But you do have to be careful because people might be having these meetings and you'll be fined. If you're.
Welcome to the conundrum of the city council.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Ann McFarlane. Appreciate your spending evening with us and everyone, thanks for attending.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Lot of value.
Yeah, thanks for coming, everybody. Okay, bye-bye.